I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like me back?
Happy New Year.
We're glad to have you back. Happy New Year, everyone. So, we would need most of the signed awards.
So, my move, second.
All in favor? And while we're doing that, Dan?
While we are signing the warrants, motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, so.
I will let that motion be answered.
Do I have a second?
Georgie is coming on tonight.
I need a second for the man.
Second.
All those are favor.
She's coming up for what?
Something about sewer.
Is she on the agenda?
I don't know.
Well, she'd have to be on the agenda.
Yes. I know what she's gonna talk about, so I can just throw it in any place.
Well, on good to other business, you can handle that, okay, for it. So, this looks like we have any old business, so for new business, why don't we skip to the sidewalk replacement grant? Because we have DOT. No, no, I thought we'd skip to the DOT, it's here, why would we have to listen to that?
He doesn't, but you said sidewalk.
I did say sidewalk. So, what, what's? I said, can we skip to the sidewalk replacement?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, DOT?
You can walk to the sidewalk.
If they were going there.
Alright, so, we're going to this third new business. Because we have somebody from the DOT already there, so can we see him?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hi, Patrick.
Good afternoon, evening.
Hello.
Do you want to do a preamble, or do you want me to just kind of jump in?
Jump right in.
Jump right in.
That works for me as well. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Patrick Adams, and I am main DOT's active transportation planner. I work with communities across the state on bikeability, walkability, and sense of community. I deal a lot with, with access issues, ADA compliance, as well as other safety issues that are out there as well. I was out to, to look back late last year. Renee, was that in, that was probably September, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I have in my mind.
September, October, I know it was starting to cool down a little bit, and we walked around. As part of what I do, I provide technical assistance to communities, but I also manage a grant program, a federal grant program for infrastructure, so to build sidewalks, crosswalks, improve safety at pedestrian crossings, school zone issues, things like that. Renee asked if I could just talk a little bit about it. Our program is a, is a rolling application period. The applications are open to communities and other community-focused organizations that have a transportation interest. Main DOT is usually using federal highway transportation dollars. These grants are 80/20, so 80% is covered by the federal grant, and 20% is local match. The town recently, probably what, two years ago now, finished up a sidewalk project that was under this grant program, but it's been a, it's been a long time since the town has applied for these funds. The project you've just finished was probably initiated back in 2012. So, under this program, communities apply, and the application deadline, as I said, is July 15th of this year. We take all the applications we receive, and we review them at the end of August, and between September and December, we begin putting together our work plan for the coming three years. Communities that have successful applications are notified in January of the following year of, of the award, and generally speaking, because this is federal process, as, as you may have learned through the previous process, it tends to be a little more complicated, it tends to be a little more expensive, but we are covering the 80% of the cost, and it does take a little bit longer. Generally speaking, we are looking at about a three-year timeline. So, if you submit an application in '22, we would be looking at constructing likely in '25. So, I have a meeting set up with Renee next week to come out and visit and talk about the application form and the application process. We've talked about doing a walk around town to explore some issues, as well as explore some of the tools I have, some of the resources that I can bring there to help you complete the application process. If I'm not mistaken, I don't have the map in front of me, Renee, you were talking mostly about School Street, correct?
That's what I've observed, and I put it out in the select board, and they can offer their feedback as well, if they have a different opinion, and that would be the time to correct that, I suppose, but.
There is no sidewalk down there, so, yeah.
I think School Street is applicable.
Yeah.
Since we have you here as a captive audience, let me throw.
I can run away.
Let me throw in something that is not necessarily sidewalk-related. We have a boat ramp here in town that has multiple potholes. We've already lost a couple dogs, few small children, we'd, we'd like to get those filled up, okay?
You'd like to get the kids and dogs back?
Oh, you better ask their parents.
You know, we do have a state-owned public boat launch that does have, needs some work, but I think that's not under your, your department's, and that.
I don't know if that's a DOT resource, or Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry.
You guys talk to each other?
We do, actually, that's actually something I can look into and try to get an answer, so I can bring it on Monday.
That would be grand, lovely.
Yes, it's Department of Parks and Recreation boat launch.
I suspect that's what it is, but I can have a conversation with them about that.
Excellent, thank you.
I had a question, historically speaking, on that last sidewalk project we did, which ended up, you know, it's beautiful, it's done, and this one being on School Street would be great. Part of the support problem we might eventually run into, or hope to avoid, was the initial costs versus when it got done, and then there was an additional cost, which meant additional votes to get the additional money, in which case, if you don't vote yes, the money you already spent to a project that hadn't started yet, you'll lose. Is somehow that been cleaned up a little better, and that wouldn't happen, or there are no guarantees?
Well, we're talking, we're talking governmental cash flows. There's always, there's always questions and challenges there. Part of, of what hurt in, in your scenario was the app, as I said, the application was originally processed back in 2012, and I think we finished that in '20, it may have been '19, but I think we finished in '20, and that's a pretty long time for this process to go along, and every year we delay. Really equals about a 10 to 15% increase in cost when it comes to construction. One of the things that we've started doing now is when we move a project forward, we enter into an agreement with the community on an estimated cost to do the preliminary design and some of the initial right-of-way work, and that process brings us into some of the early stages of the design. It gives us an opportunity to look at what some of the impacts may be on abutting neighbors, whether there's a need to acquire property, or whether we only need construction easements. We learn about drainage concerns, utility concerns, and those things, as well as developing a preliminary cost for the construction. So, as we enter into this, what we're really doing is moving to a point where we feel more comfortable with what we project the construction cost is going to be, and before we move on to the next phases, which is moving through the right-of-way acquisition process and doing the final design and going through all the permitting, we give the community an opportunity to make that decision, is this a go or no go? So, you know.
So, we're receiving the information from you regarding, you might have some problems here with right-of-ways, you might have some whatever, and we can base our assessment to go forward without having committed taxpayers? Okay. Yeah, thank you.
This is not a real number, but if we went in, if we went into this thinking that we'd be able to design and construct the project for $250,000, which I don't, but say that was the number, and we go through this design process, and we find out it's gonna be, say, $700,000, that's a substantial difference in what you thought going in? That's why we're giving communities the opportunity to really reevaluate. A project that seems good at $250,000, or feels good at $500,000, may not feel as good if that price is done.
But have they worked?
That's why we want to have those conversations.
But they have worked the process, that you're saying at 250, at that point, the town has not made any taxpayer commitment?
Yes, the only commitment you will have made is on the design.
So, of the last one that we had in 2012, there was a $70,000 commitment, of which the town had to pay 20%, and it was of the same thing, and only that much money was in the coffer at the time, and so we.
Going up.
At the time, it, they had a certain cap, and of course, time went by, but they, they didn't even have the money, and other than for the planning and the signs, from what I understand.
And it was two different select boards.
So, we wouldn't be spinning our wheels to determine whether or not the planning and design stage, I think what happened in the, which delayed our last project, but there wasn't money put aside for the construction phase.
It wasn't funded.
There wasn't funded, so I think, to answer your question, and I think it's correct, that we do have to put 20% of the design planning in.
Correct.
But we can stop at that point if we don't want to go forward.
I'm guessing right now, we would probably be looking somewhere in the vicinity of, say, $75,000 to do design and the preliminary right-of-way, and, and hopefully that's on the high end. So, if we were looking at $75,000 as how much the department would budget for that design process, we'd be looking at a commitment from the community of about $15,000.
So, minimally, you're figuring, it's like, it'd only cost $15,000 for it to, for potentially the town to back out?
To that point. I would think somewhere in that $10,000, $15,000 range. Unless we, we discover other issues along the way that make it more complicated.
So, so the, the grant is in two phases. So, the town agrees to Phase 1, planning and design, at a certain cost, and then if it looks like a go, then we have a choice to either go forward with the construction phase or to not.
Correct, you don't have to reapply to that construction phase. It's just a conversation between the community and main DOT to determine if the town wants to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Especially, you know, over the last, I would say, four years, we've seen such an exponential growth in material costs and labor costs to, to construct these projects. We, it, it's not uncommon for us to be surprised when the bids come in, when it's, when they go out for construction.
Patrick, do you want to touch on the idea about the sidewalk crosswalk down by the apartments that we talked about?
So, when I was there last year, last fall, we went out for a little walk down by the apartments next to Dollar General. And one of the things I proposed was putting in a sidewalk on the same side of the road as Dollar General, coming in front of, well, at that point, was the vacant commercial property, I don't know if they've moved in yet.
Quite, no.
And tying into your sidewalk network. We also talked about putting in a high-visibility pedestrian crossing from the, from the apartments to this sidewalk. So, our thought was that by building this sidewalk segment, we would complete the connectivity between your existing sidewalk system and the apartments, and this, this new business that's going in, and Dollar General, and the school as well.
That sounds nice.
That sounds very, sounds very appropriate.
So, that's a relatively small project, meaning it's, it's kind of short. If we built that by itself, it would probably be more expensive, and so what I'd have, have proposed to Renee was rolling it into this School Street project. It's gonna make that project a little bit bigger, but we can do both at the same time.
Yeah, that, that sounds excellent. It's gonna need some upgrades anyways, that area.
And we know, we know that there's a lot, and at least while I was there, there was a lot of pedestrian activity coming into and going out of the apartments and going along the roads over there.
Yes.
And, and we know access to the school is a priority as well.
Absolutely, that's a very good point.
Yes. I just, is there any, like, improving or repairing existings? Because I think of the Washington sidewalk that was done, and how it stops at Pleasant, and you know, Pleasant has that existing blacktop sidewalk that is in awful condition in some places. I just wondered if there's like repair or restoration versus new.
You can maintain it.
That's it, otherwise you gotta go to ADA compliance.
You've gone into a very dark place.
There you go, Nancy.
Sorry.
So, if these are issues brought about because of maintenance issues, those are local concerns, and my funding is not permitted to assist with it. However, if your primary purpose is to address safety concerns and address accessibility and meet ADA compliance issues, and your existing infrastructure does not meet that, then I can use my funding for that, but I cannot assist with maintenance issues.
Well, when you walk in.
Good to know, that's good to know.
Well, I just noticed, like, you know, on the Saturdays when the market's happening, or when the chicken's happening up with the, you know, that, that's busy, and like, some of that, I think of, what's his name?
You know, the granite lift that everybody tricks over.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, thank you.
And, and part of what, what we were talking about also is, I don't know anything else to call it, but with the new businesses. That property has a very large, multiple entrance driveway that's very wide open, and it doesn't meet our current access standards, the driveway opening widths. So, part of this project would also close up that driveway somewhat, and make it a little bit easier for drivers and pedestrians, people in that area, to anticipate where vehicles are going to go in, into that property and exit that property.
I'd give him a good, I'd give him a lot that way.
Yes, and he, and that person who purchased that property should probably have most of that done by the time that we get to the actual construction phase, anyway. And I'm sure he wouldn't mind as long as he delineate the entrance, the, and the, you're talking about delineating the entrance and the egress in more tangible, tangible understanding of where, where it is. I agree with that, yes.
I, I would give him a lot, I think, anyway.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yes, that would make it look a lot more, so, we're all for you coming to visit on Monday, provided the weather is.
Could be, yes, man.
Okay, if, I'm sure you know this, but if X number of, of select board members join us, it becomes a meeting.
Well, I think we're gonna send you with Renee, and maybe one other, one other selectman, you'll be all right.
I, I just mention it so that nobody gets in trouble.
I don't get any time off.
You don't want any two of us to show together, anyway.
I don't, do we need a motion to go forward with the meeting? You've already set the meeting up.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah, no, you're okay. But we do need a motion to apply for the grant, for the grant.
I move that we apply for this grant and proceed as.
Well, I'd like to wait till you come.
We don't need to necessarily make that determination now.
Yeah.
Maybe wait, wait till you walk. After I visit.
Yeah.
And then you'll make recommendations. That's.
And you see what the, what the application is like and, and all that. To give you a rough approximation, and this is very rough, we are currently experiencing for a community that puts in a five-foot-wide sidewalk made of asphalt with asphalt curb or slipform concrete curb, we are currently seeing prices from design through construction of about $350 to $400 a linear foot.
Wow. Wow, four feet of sidewalk, maybe five?
I was gonna say five feet wide, totally wide, doesn't it?
So, that's the required width now, five feet? Is that what the Washington Street?
Five and a half, and soon it will be six.
Oh, okay.
But that's where we're at at this point.
I'll just remind everybody, the comprehensive plan, the sidewalks are in the comprehensive plan from 2010, is one of the projects that continue with.
When was your comprehensive plan completed?
2010, having to revise it, it's been 10 years, so.
I was gonna say, at 2010, it's, it's become obsolete, hasn't it, is it required every 10 years?
We do have, we do have a comprehensive plan committee.
Working on.
Working on revisions, should be done by the end of the year. Thank you, so much.
Not my worry, but I figured I'd mention that.
So, anything else, other than the meeting is at what time Monday?
Um, let me look at my calendar here. Have we heard what the weather's supposed to be out your way on Monday?
I think Monday, Monday night into Tuesday, and all day Tuesday, I think's supposed to be like one degree, but I think we're still okay Monday.
Twenty, twenty below.
On Tuesday?
Tunnel up.
Monday. I think Monday we're on the low twice.
I don't mind the cold, it's the freezing rain, but.
No, that's coming tonight and tomorrow.
Well, obviously, so you're obviously coming in the later part of the morning, or the afternoon time?
Eleven AM is what time I have on my calendar.
So, before you leave, we'll, we'll check the weather, give us, communicate. You coming from Bangor or Augusta?
Coming from Bangor, and we all know what a wonderful road Route 9 can be with nasty weather.
You might want to take an alternate route.
We often have to do Route 1.
Sometimes I'll go Route 1 to Ellsworth.
Route 1, yes, yeah.
It's longer, but it's, it's easier to cut across.
Yeah. Very good, so, if anybody wants to be at that meeting, speak up with any particularly checked weather. Would you like to do it, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for me tonight?
Okay, no, not right now, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
If there are other questions, you know, feed them to me on Monday. I'll plan on being there, and we can, we can walk the area and have some discussions. There'll be some inside time looking at paperwork and some outside time.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, looking forward to it.
See you Monday, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, have a great evening, be safe.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Bye.
Bye.
So, okay, we'll go back to septic, septic replacement grant update.
It's just a, it's in your packet, just received a letter that they've processed the payment, and everything went well, there was an adjustment. We're at, the town for, for administering this grant was able to get $400 out of this, but it put it up over what the bid was and what the allowable was, so they're, they're taking it back to their people, they're doing an adjustment, and that'll be approved later on, so, that and the cost of the design.
So, it's all done?
It's all done.
Great.
The septic's in, so what do you want to do with the thing? They'll be back in the, we, we withheld a tenth of the payment, so they, they come back in the spring to finish the proceeding and the grassing.
Right, yeah.
Good.
Appropriate, just an update that it's done. So, bandstand repair, we're still on the bandstand repair.
Well, we've yet to get it repaired, so I figured this is the time of year to get the bidding out there for the spring work. I did not change anything, I only wiped out the gates, the proposal was still here. Now's the time to do any redlining, but otherwise.
I got one, there's no way they're gonna get anybody to do it by, by the spring of 2022. I'd say for the timeline.
You're lucky to get it by September.
September, exactly.
Yeah, September, absolutely.
You know, I was at Ellsworth today, and right there at the corner, the Amish are selling these little gazebo things.
Totally different animal.
Yeah, but it looks a lot like what these things are, and if worse comes to worse.
That one was a replica of a rhythm.
That was beautiful, it's a beautiful.
Boy, thank you.
It was part of the, part of building it from a picture. Very good, very good, so I think there's a.
I can tell you who paid for it.
Who did?
RLF.
Who?
And they will, they offered to pay for something now.
It was $2,800, $500.
Revolving loan fund, RLF.
Revolving.
Yeah, yeah, it might be more like $5,000, but you said just the under, the orders?
Yeah.
How much?
It's, it needs a lot of work.
Yeah.
What, what she has listed is exactly what it needs.
Oh, well, that's perfect.
I mean.
And didn't you go over that with Renee?
Just a little bit, she, she did most of it herself, and you can't price it. Materials go.
They're up and down, yeah, yeah.
We got one bid, but it was astronomical at the time, and it was turned down. That was there at Fermat at Bangor.
Well, let's try it again.
I will.
And we, we got a bid another time from a local, but I think they picked and chose, they didn't do the full proposal, so.
I agree, that was turned down by the RLF board. It was time and materials, and they didn't give a quote.
Yeah, you can't do that. I see a lot of people who want to put something in town, see if I can get some, someone to bid.
And until we get it fixed, do we continue with the yellow caution tape around it?
Oh, yeah, you have to, yeah.
So, it won't be used for this summer? Masons, have they considered, you know, you know, donating some money? I feel like this has been going on for at least three years, that we're trying to get help with it.
I can see us having a little cop at the IGA and.
They did repairs last time.
Pardon me?
They did a lot of repairs last time, just get it through, yeah.
But they did offer to help some.
Oh, yeah, they're great.
So, motion to put it back out for bid?
Yeah, I just changed that, the date.
Yep, would the date change?
Got it.
That's September, well, maybe we can have it for Labor Day, put September 1st. Maybe we can have a party on Labor Day there. So, on business, did you want to bring up what Georgie wanted?
Oh, well, Georgie has talked to me, and I did talk to people in the office about, she has moved, she has bought that property down on. she has moved, she has bought that property down on, what is it, Lower Water Street or Pleasant or whatever.
What property?
Ryer, Ryer property.
Put one out on the point, piss point.
Way up the point.
Oh, you mean the one that had the garage fall down?
Yeah, yeah. And she has not, she's not moved in there. There's so much repair going on that it's just not livable yet. And yet she has been getting a sewer bill and a water bill. And they're just monumental right now and she can hardly afford it. Did you want to add anything to that, Georgie?
Yeah, I appreciate you putting me on the agenda, number one. And number two, I'm glad I was able to join via Zoom. I didn't get a water bill. It was just a sewer bill. And, I mean, I did have a wonderful conversation with Suzette. She very gently and professionally explained to me that it is part of the ordinance that people pay between zero amount and I forget if it was ninety or whatever the amount was. It just seems a little high. I mean, I did just send in my check to make sure that it's there on time. I guess I hadn't paid it though the previous, which I didn't know needed to be paid. So I owe double for the two quarters. So it's like a hundred and eighty-something dollars, something like that. But I did actually talk to four towns in Washington County and three of them don't charge for water or sewer unless you actually are using water or sewer on their property, you know, on the property. And then one of them charges a nominal fee of eighteen dollars and fifty cents. One of them actually asked that you, one, make sure that it's capped. And number two, you have the code enforcement officer just make sure that it's capped properly. And then there's no fee. So I was just hoping that the board might consider not charging so much for something that isn't actually being used yet. I mean, we've collected over a hundred needles off the property and are still in the process of a major cleanup. I mean, I'm not using any water or sewer, I can tell you that. I'm just really trying to clean it up at this point. It just feels a little steep. And I do understand that's an ordinance, but I just thought it was worth addressing with the board. And so I appreciate you taking the time to answer my question.
Well, unfortunately, when the sewer was put in twenty-five, thirty years ago, everyone who had a lot in the town and had a lateral going by their lot had to pay the sewer quarterly bill. It has gone up a little bit in the past year because it's supposed to run on its own revenue. And we were running at a deficit. And on top of that, we have a five million dollar new sewer upgrade that is mandatory by the state and the EPA that it be done.
Down the street from her.
So, yes. So we would love to, and we welcome you to Lubec. I'm thrilled that you're here. I know you're going to do wonderful things with the property, but we really can't, in my opinion, or, and we'll take a vote, that we can reduce this, that's actually very minimal, considering the town had to borrow two million dollars for the sewer upgrade. And we did get three million in grants.
Terrible. We can't change an ordinance.
No, and well, we just can't change.
We can't do it.
At least you're going to be benefiting the sewer. There are people that are paying, that pay yearly in their taxes for a sewer that they don't have at all. That live in West Lubec. And live on 189 where the sewer doesn't go. They're all, they all paid the loan off, the original loan, and they're probably going to have to pay going forward.
And in actual fact, Lubec Landmarks paid for a sewer and water.
Finally, they have a bathroom.
We have a bath.
So it's like eighty-seven fifty. That's.
Eighty-six ten.
Eighty-six ten. Close. Eighty-six ten. And are you even tied into the sewer? I'm curious.
I.
It's something you might want to check on to see whether you even have sewer lines going into your property or not.
I haven't hooked it up or anything. I mean, I don't think it's on.
Well, I guess we'll just have to know how, get the history, the owner, tell you whether they were saying.
She's, yeah.
Who knows? Yeah, the sewer department can check to see if anything was ever put in there. Well, but do I have a motion that we can't? I make a motion that we can't.
It's an ordinance. We can override ordinance.
Yeah, you have to go to a whole town meeting to change an ordinance.
Well, do check with Bruce Green.
He's a neighbor.
Is that good?
Oh, favorite.
And you're talking to us from Florida, Georgie. How bad can it be?
Well, my mother just died, so I take, you know, four days of free.
I understand. My sister died too.
I'm having a little recoup.
Yes, you deserve that.
Be well, dear.
Well, yes, and just so you know that that property was on sale for over a million dollars for years. It's a beautiful piece of property. So whatever you got it for, you had to do a very good deal.
Georgie, if that property could talk.
That's right.
You wouldn't want it.
Well, I thought it was worth asking.
It was. And it comes up frequently, actually.
You're not the only one that's come and asked. If I'm not you in the sewer, why do I have to pay? It goes back to when it was put into the town and what they agreed on.
So who is it that I'm supposed to talk to to make sure that's turned off? I don't feel like that should be a charge that should be.
No, no, no. Bruce Green is at the water place, the sewer place, down from you.
So even though I'm not paying for, I don't have to pay for water, but I have to pay for sewer. But the town made sure that this was completely capped off and safe for the time being?
That I don't.
You'd have to ask Bruce. The water treatment plant.
No, because when they put this in, they put the ladders into lots. And they capped them off to the lots.
Yeah, they were all capped off.
That's all in the.
He has like a schematic, a map of all the lots in town and what was and wasn't done when the sewer was put in.
Okay, so I basically need to talk to the water company about.
Sewer and water are two separate companies. Sewer is town and water is its own entity and they have two different offices.
To change anything, Georgie, we have to go to the townspeople. It's an ordinance and we can't change an ordinance. I'm just telling you, we have to go to the townspeople to change an ordinance. We can't do it.
And with so few houses actually with a lot of flow, you need every lot to help sustain, to keep everybody's bills at that eighty-six ten.
Yes, otherwise it would take a lot of empty lots.
Everybody's bill's going to jump up probably three hundred dollars.
And you probably do want plumbing on the lot at some point.
Not the Aiden Everdick.
You know, not till I can figure all this out. So it just, it was a surprise. I wasn't prepared for that.
No. Go for a swim, Georgie.
I will be. I'm going to go out for sushi shortly and some sake, so that will calm me down.
Just rub it in, Georgie.
But I am delighted to have the property. Please know that. And I'm very excited about what the future brings for it. I don't know what that will be yet, but I am all on board and I'm over the moon. It's a whole new challenge and I'm excited for it.
We're excited that you're here.
Yes, we are excited you're here.
Definitely.
Enjoy, Georgie.
All right. Thanks very much. I love it. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Yeah, I got one question. The reevaluation, where are we?
Reevaluation? Actually, we are stopped at the fact that we're, I don't know if we did make a motion to go ahead with the.
Reevaluation of what?
Well, we ran by an idea that I came up with. I think it ran by Renee and I ran it by some of you about having a full-time employee for two years. You voted to do it.
You voted.
You voted. So we have to put the ad out. And we didn't think that two weeks before the holiday was the time to put the ad out.
I've got one written. You just need to read it.
Yeah, so now is the time to put it out.
So they're going to reevaluate?
Well, if we can get someone to do it for the price that we put aside. Because remember, we put aside a hundred and ten.
So we're hiring somebody for. We're hiring somebody for two years for what?
To do the reevaluation.
Okay, right. That's what I'm saying. Have to be certified.
What?
I hear you're doing the freezer.
So anyway, if we get any rights, then we'll just, obviously, that would be spoken. That would be an executive session for it to be, would be an employee and what we can offer. So we'll put it out there and see if we get any responses. So I would like to put it in the Bangor Daily News, though.
Yeah, like three hundred dollars for an ad.
Because there might be someone who wants to do here for two years and fall in love with it or rent or.
Yeah, you know, with the main municipal associates.
It's a very demanding, to get the job, to get the credentials.
That's right. Well, as far as being, well, you could be an assessor. So a real estate agent has a lot of that background to begin with because you have to do comparative price analysis, which is similar. But it is a lot of training.
My nephew is one.
See, the thing is, when they're good at it, I have somebody in the family that does it. And she is crazy, crazy busy. And she's not, she's not just, I mean, she's making real big money.
Well, we just have to put it out there and at least we will be able to prove that we could not get someone. And then we go back in August and we ask for more money. So if we don't release, yeah. And we already have the bids that we didn't accept originally.
We can go back to them.
So we can show that and we can show this other idea we have and see if we can do it that way.
And figure those bids are going up by now.
They would have an office and I, you know, we could either hire them as an independent contractor or hire them with benefits. It depends on what.
What they want.
Well, it's negotiable. It depends on our budget and, well, budget season's coming up. We're all looking forward to that. So public comment? Motion, we'll entertain a motion to.
I would like this to adjourn now.
I'd like to second that.
All right, well, it's blowing a gale out there.
It adds warmth.
Because I have a serious question.